Good evening all, welcome to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting of August the 2nd, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we just have to take care of some housekeeping business for our transcriptionist. All members of the Planning Board are present, also Rich Krogan, our Planning Board Attorney, Sexto Martinez, Building Department, and Michael Guadory from the Fire Department. First thing this evening, just a reminder to all, I point out that the first time applicant's appearances this evening are considered preliminary hearing and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. First on the agenda this evening is the approval of the June 5th meeting minutes. There are no July minutes, so we didn't have a July meeting, so to speak, so we didn't have a chance to officially vote on the 5th, June 5th meeting. So I need a motion to accept the June 5th meeting minutes. I have a motion from Mr. Higbee, I have a second from Mr. McCormick. Any questions, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
I abstain.
Yes.
Ms. Whip?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, moving on, on the agenda, we have David Cohen, 14 to 20 Academy Avenue. This is a six-month extension on a previous approved application. I need a motion to approve the six-month extension. Mr. Madden, then you have a second. Mr. Britto, discussion?
Is this the first time?
I believe so.
Yes. I knew that was coming.
Me too, I was trying to get by it. Thank you for asking. Any questions, discussion, roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Whip?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is Orange Terrace Properties LLC, Orange Terrace, four-lot subdivision. Please state your name for the record, please.
Neil D. Frishberg, Fabricant, Littman &amp; Frishberg, 1 Harriman Square, Ocean, New York, for the applicant. As you noted before you, is an application for a four-lot subdivision on Orange Terrace, on Orange Terrace, it's lots 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, and 13, Orange Terrace, Middletown, New York, Section 33, Blocks 4, Lots 2 through 7. Initially came before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance, initially for a six-lot subdivision, we withdrew it, and then withdrew that application, and then we received an applicant, they received, we asked for and received a variance for a four-lot subdivision. The ZBA determined that adding the four homes would be in line with the character of the neighborhood. They determined that the applicant could not purchase land from surrounding neighbors, and therefore, what he sought to be achieved could not be achieved without the variance. It also determined that the 3.9% variance was insubstantial. They determined that the change would not result in any negative environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and any other issues that arise can be controlled through the Planning Board and DPW. And we would have to comply with all DPW and Planning Board requirements. So here we are.
And that's all ratified by the resolution of the ZBA?
That's correct. Then that resolution, as I recall, was dated March 21, 2024, and four days later, we filed this application. And I had a good workstation with Mr. Capazella and Mr. Krogan, and they asked us to modify the plan so that the sort of dirt road that was in front of what was Old Lot 2 and New Lot 1 extended to the end of New Lot 1, so that when the person bought the house, they were looking at partial dirt road and partial paved road. And we thought, and Mr. Fusco, who's here today, will probably answer any questions regarding that. A good portion of the issues, I would say, regarding traffic, water runoff, fire and safety issues, were discussed before the Zoning Board of Appeals. For example, the turnaround on Orange Terrace was discussed at length, and we came to a good resolution regarding that. Same thing with water runoff and such. Now, of course, as previously mentioned, we are required to comply with all requirements to the Planning Board, and I understand there's a letter that Mr. Fusco is going to address regarding engineering, specific engineering issues. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Before we go any further, just let me do some housekeeping. Ms. Tu, we do have the mailings, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what I want to do, I want to open the public hearing. This way, whatever is said, is the public can be involved in also. All right? Go ahead, Mr. Fusco, sorry.
Yeah, my name's Al Fusco, 233 East Main Street, Middletown. We're the engineer on the project, and basically, a couple of the changes that we made as per your Planning Board engineers' requirements, and the chairman, and we extended the blacktop road to the end of the last lot on that street. And we did that, we'd gone a little further, but we backed it up a little bit as per the negotiations between yourselves and the attorney during the work session. So that was changed. We finished the stormwater report that was requested by the engineer, and that's been submitted to him. I'm sure he hasn't seen it, so, you know, that's an open issue, so to speak, but we did do everything he requested towards that line. In addition, we changed the recharge areas to dry wells as per the stormwater pollution prevention plan that we had submitted, and that all came out well. The soils underneath the dry wells were excellent, we recorded those percolation rates, and they were acceptable. And again, as I stated, the biggest thing that we had to do as per his request were the stormwater as requested, and that was all completed. We have issued a letter to him answering each and every one of his areas of request, as well as the stormwater report.
So at this point, we're just waiting for CPL to review what your latest submission is, as well?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to the public, I just want everyone to realize that this board does not approve this, okay? This board will plan on moving this application to the Common Council. That is where it gets approval, not here, okay? We also will move this forward if we all agree on the resolution, that the ZBA resolution is part of the process. All CPL comments being addressed to the satisfaction of CPL. Any items requested by the City of Middletown Planning Board or the City of Middletown Public Works, it must be met by the applicant. They're aware of that. It remains subject to the Common Council declaring lead agency, and if necessary, a NACDEC being issued, and any additional comments raised by the Common Council and their ultimate decision on whether granting approval. So if they're not getting approval, we're simply moving it on to the Common Council as per the city code and recommendations from us, all right? Are there any questions? Sure, absolutely, go ahead.
Does this move on to the Common Council regardless of how we vote?
Yes, it will, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Well, that would be, sorry to interrupt, but that would be up to the applicant to then make the request to the Common Council. But the applicant would have the right to proceed regardless of the decision by the Planning Board.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing is open. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward.
Good evening, name's Peter Broker. I live on 27 Orange Terrace, probably lived there most of my life. I wish somebody would put an end to this thing. We had our first meeting with the Department of the Public Works on 4422. That's over two years ago, for a small, little project like this. It's getting to the point where, you know, I've attended over a dozen meetings here, and it's just getting ridiculous. Now, I hear now again, you can't make a decision on this thing.
It's not our decision to make. It's the Common Council's decision to make.
I understand, but... All right, is there a plan available that I could look at?
There is, right on the desk over there. In the meantime, if anyone else has any comments that they would like to come up while Mr. Broker reviews the plan.
Mr. Krogan? Are Planning Board members allowed to ask a question of the people at the microphone, or no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How's it going? Jason Lichtenstein, 1 Clinton Street. I've spoken a few times at these meetings. First of the March meeting, it was my understanding that they didn't grant the variance, they just didn't have the means to stop it from moving forward, was how it was worded, because we sat there and listened to that, that they weren't approving the variance, more so that they didn't have the means or the reasoning to stop this from moving forward to this meeting.
I'll just stop you for a moment.
I have a question, that was more of a question than a statement.
Sure. The answer is, the ZBA did make a decision, there was a findings, and it was determined that the variance was being granted.
Okay. So basically, what, you know, my stance on this has been simple, it's been pretty consistent all along. In April of 2022, when Jacob came up and spoke to us, he made it very clear to us that if we could prove through past precedents that there was something in writing that stated that you cannot build without 75 feet of road frontage in our neighborhood, that we would have a case. We went back, we did the research that we were asked to do, and we were able to prove that in a September 11th, 1991 meeting, that they decided that Jack Stack and his company could not build on Orange Terrace, that they did not have 75 feet of road frontage. I understand that they're claiming 3.6% is not a lot of percentage, and I get that, I understand basic math, but I also understand, as a parent and as a teacher, that if I give somebody an inch, they go on to take a mile. What happens here sets precedence moving forward in other projects that happen throughout the city?
I just want to stop you for one moment.
My question becomes, what happens when they go to build up in that neighborhood and other properties? Do they get to cite this as past precedents, and they get to move forward on the precedence being broken?
There's a process. So on the variance, there's area variance and use variance. They applied for an area variance. There are five factors that are reviewed. So every application is unique and factors in what the applicant, what the public, and a weighing. And that's what the zoning board does on each and every application. So one doesn't set a precedence, you have to go through the criteria.
Okay, but again, like, this is how it was presented to us from Jacob, and Jacob told us that we had to do our homework and present our case as what it was. It's in the city minutes from the 1991 meeting where the variance was denied for not having the road frontage there. We're countering this on having similar concerns with the road frontage, because other neighborhoods, other houses in our neighborhood could be built on smaller lots. We've come accustomed to equality of life up there by having the houses spread apart, and again, we don't want this moving forward where it could be negatives, it could be negatively affected down the road with that. You know, they seem to have addressed mostly their issues that we had, but the difference between three houses and four houses on a dead end tend to be a lot, you know, and we don't appreciate the fact that it was taken lightly, that we see the traffic coming up there with a lot of little kids on the block, there's about a dozen little kids that live up on that block, so to be taken lightly with added traffic up there, you know, to us as neighborhood, that doesn't sound very neighborly. Like, that doesn't come across as, because they're presenting themselves as they're here for the betterment in the community, they're making the neighborhood better, the young man that initially went up there for the projects that think about how much is going to increase the value of your house. So they're up here selling us on this vision, on this mission, but the reality is, like, you add another house there, what do you add? Four cars? Do you add 12 trips a day? What happens to the kids that are up there? So there's a quality of life issue that goes into that. The other question that I've had multiple times that hasn't been asked, in our neighborhood that there is very bad water pressure that goes on up there, what happens when you add multiple houses to a neighborhood that already has poor water pressure? You know, is that negatively affected? Again, because we presented this to the city before, and nothing's been done to address our issues. We've been told that that's our problem. Well, you add more houses to that, what happens to it? Each house comes with its own individual pumping station. A couple of the houses sit below the sewer line. What happens when that sewage gets pumped out of those houses? Does it negatively affect the houses that sit below the sewage line? Close directly, 2 Clinton Street sits behind the sewage line that's going to come off Orange Terrace. How does that negatively affect things as they're pumping their sewage out from their pumping stations that each house is going to have? Now you have four houses, four pumping stations. You know, what happens specifically to 2 Clinton Street if something was to backfire with this pumping? And I don't know the answers. These are the questions that I've had that just arose, and they haven't really been addressed. And in our neighborhood, again, there's been issues with the fire hydrant. There was a fire lower down on West Conklin Avenue a couple of years ago, I think it was the Bushing House, I'm not really sure. There was an incident, there was an issue with one of the fire hydrants that sat right next to it. They had to go further down into the community to get another fire hydrant. How does this negatively affect that? Because there is a fire hydrant at the end of Orange Terrace. I've never seen it get tested before, it sits off in the woods before. You know, do we know if this works? You know, there were certain questions that I had about this that just didn't get addressed, and I put it in writing, I've submitted letters before, you know, and they, you know, those concerns weren't addressed. The biggest thing that I really have, and that's upsetting to us, is that we all built our properties under certain guidelines. You know, a lot of us that are up there built our houses, and we had to abide by certain guidelines in order to build our houses. I don't think it's appropriate that another company gets to come in, and they're going to build multiple houses now to make a profit, and get to circumvent the rules that were in place when we built our properties. You know, because you take away rules and regulations, and they become suggestions. If they become suggestions, well, I want a chicken coop in my yard, and I want to build a pole barn in my yard, because I have the land to do this, but I'm not allowed to do it. You know, I've been told I can't do things, if they're allowed to make suggestions and do what they want to do, what's to stop me from doing what I want to do on my land? You know, and it just becomes a question that I have, if they're allowed to do these things, where does it end? You know, where does it stop? 3.6%, the next one, 7.2%, and a precedent's going to come, because they've cited past precedents as well. So now I get to cite past precedent when I want to do things on my property. And the snowball just goes, and you look at what happened, again.
Well, I just want to interrupt for a second. They did go through the processing. We had an engineer review the plans, the engineer made comments, they addressed those comments, there's still some comments that the engineer, so the engineer did look at the pumping station and all the factors. Our Fire Department is here and can address the fire hydrant issue, but I'm sure they did look at it, and everyone worked together as far as the professionals to get their plan to where it's at. And all of your concerns were concerns that everyone had looked at.
When they addressed that in the March meeting, we didn't hear any of those issues being addressed. But then I guess the biggest problem would be, you know, just how we had to build our houses, and, you know, we expect the same to be done for the people moving forward.
But they did. They went through the process. You're allowed to ask for a variance, the law allows that.
And that's why we're testing.
But they went through that process.
That's our, that's my stance on it.
I understand.
I disagree with it, you know, and that's why we have the public hearing, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of it.
Absolutely.
And as it goes to the Common Council, the same, you know, the same concerns will be had, where it's like...
And you have that absolute right.
If we're going to do something, we should be doing it consistently across the board.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, I see on the plan that...
Just if you could state your name again for the record.
Peter Broker.
Thank you.
At one time, you folks requested a hammerhead turnaround, and I don't see that on the plan. I doubt very much that there is enough room to turn around one of your new sanitation vehicles. And you're going to force them to back up like six or seven football fields?
Sir, I just couldn't hear you. Could you please repeat what you said?
The, at one time, requested a hammerhead turnaround at the end of the road. I don't see that on the map. I doubt very much that a fire truck can turn around on that spot as is. It's going to force them to back up six or seven football fields. It's crazy to do that. You need to have a decent turnaround. And the other thing is, we're building four homes where we should only build three. I was forced to subdivide the 75-foot lots and the 100-foot lots. Mr. Stack, a builder, he was forced to subdivide 75-foot lots, 100-foot lots. Before you let this fly, you got to think about Clinton Street. There's 18 lots on Clinton Street, they're 50-foot lots. What are you going to do when they come around and...
Every application will be looked at as it is submitted.
But how are you going to deny one if you...
Again, they have to go through the criterion and complete the application process.
You already have one guy buying, you bought six lots, but you split them up under different names. Every other 50-foot lot is under a different name, so you know what he's up to.
We can only deal with the applications that come before us.
Yeah, well, this thing isn't good for the city, it's not good for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Villafane, 19 Orange Terrace, and I guess I'm beating a dead horse since you already approved the variance, but I, one thing I want to...
This board did not approve the variance, the zoning board did, the Planning Board.
One thing I have to say is that this is in line with the character of the neighborhood, okay? You take the entire area. I'm concerned with Orange Terrace. Orange Terrace is what I'm concerned with. It's a beautiful neighborhood. There are very little, few houses there that are on 50-foot lot, and they've been there, some, two of them for years, and one maybe within the last six, seven years. All I know is, it is not in line with the character of the neighborhood. Building these four houses will destroy that character. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask Fusco about the hammerhead turnaround?
You can.
Maria Judge, I'm along 2 Clinton Street. So I have a question as far as procedure. So initially, this application came before the Common Council, and then it got sent down to zoning, or was it planning down to zoning? Like, what's the procedure to get this approved once and for all?
If I could speak to that. They went to the Zoning Board, they put an application in, they withdrew it.
No, what I'm saying is, originally, it was in front of the Planning Board, or was it in front of the Common Council?
Planning Board.
So Planning Board, so you knocked it down to zoning?
Yes. And then they withdrew the application, then they reapplied for a four-lot subdivision.
Okay.
But in the meantime, it was still pending before the Common Council, so they withdrew from the Common Council.
So now...
Then it went to the ZBA for a variance, an area variance, it got approved, and now they're before the Planning Board, just seeking to move it on to the Common Council.
So once this gets moved on to the Common Council, the Common Council is the one who's going to make the final decision?
Yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
Hopefully.
And it moves on to the Common Council no matter how we vote?
That's correct.
So why do we even vote?
Because that's what the code requires us to do.
So...
It's then up to the applicant, based upon the, our Planning Board decision, whether they want to proceed forward or not. But they can move forward regardless of the vote tonight.
So the vote for tonight is for the subdivision of the lots?
It's not approving it.
Or is it to move it forward?
Move it forward.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
But it moves forward either way?
Yes.
If the applicant decides.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the board? Mr. Madden?
In the northeast end of the property, we're adjoining Hillside Cemetery. What is the 44 feet that's shown on page two of the map?
Mr. Fusco, if you can address that?
Sure. You're going to pass the lots, is that what you're talking about?
Correct. It's adjoining to Lot 1, there's 44 feet of additional space that's shown on page two of the survey.
Yeah, yeah, that, that...
Please speak into the microphone.
That's just the end of the dedicated paper street. So there's, at one point, we had taken the blacktop to the edge of that, and then after a workshop meeting with the chairman and the attorneys and the applicant, we moved it back to the edge of the last property.
So your blacktop is going to the end of the paper street, but the applicant does not own that 44 feet of property?
Not at the end. They own where we're doing now, so that's...
They own Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4?
Right, correct.
But they don't own that additional 44 feet?
Correct.
Mr. Fusco, there was a comment from the public about the turnaround?
Yes.
Has that changed?
No, that was the same as it's been for the last, you know, even at the ZBA.
And you're able to meet the turnaround requirements from the Fire Department, DPW?
We had submitted it to the Fire Inspector, I don't believe it was yourself, sir, but one of the Fire Inspector signed off on it, Jacob signed off on it, and it's appropriate.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Yes, this is the property that goes along Hillside Cemetery. I just, for the record, want to reiterate what I said at that last meeting before it went to the ZBA, that I know for a fact that local historian Ann Vale and an elected official, who I believe is also, they're both passed away, took a tour and explained to us that along there, there are slaves buried from when New York State had slaves, and infants that were buried by people who couldn't afford proper graves. So I don't feel comfortable, I know that it's going to go regardless to the Common Council, but based on that, I am going to be voting no, but I don't want you to take it in offense, because I know that you have done your due diligence to try, but in my own good conscience, I don't feel comfortable with it, and I wanted to say so to you.
That's why you're a board... That's why you're a board member.
Thank you, you've always been a delight every time you come in front and present to us, so thank you.
Well, I understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
You know, we've been involved in situations like this. In Montgomery, there was a, you know, and they asked us to help, and we helped for nothing, you know, because I can appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members? Mr. Higbee, you have a question, or, okay? Anyone else? Anyone else from the public would like to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, I need a motion. Mr. Higbee, I need a second. Mr. McCormick. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Again, I'll give the board members one more shot, if you have any question, comments, or concerns. All right. Moving on.
Do you have one more comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Madden.
So this is moving forward to the Common Council, should the applicant so choose?
Yes.
And then the Common Council may or may not use our findings or our thoughts tonight?
Correct, they can use our findings, we hope they do. ZBA findings, we hope they do, everyone's findings, and they'll make the final decision on the approval of this subdivision.
They have to go through the subdivision process through the Common Council with public hearing and everything else.
There's going to be a roll call, right?
Yes.
We're going to have a vote.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have a vote. Yes, all right.
Did that answer, Ms. Madden?
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
Okay. On the resolution for Orange Terrace Properties LLC, Orange Terrace, four-lot subdivision. Resolution as presented. Discussion? I need a motion to accept. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden, any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Madden?
No.
Mr. McCormick?
No.
Mr. Britto?
No.
Ms. Whip?
No.
Ms. Houston?
No.
Mr. Higbee?
No.
And I vote yes. So be it, it'll go to the Planning Board or to the Common Council one way or the other, as they follow the procedure to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and effort, and also for giving us their ideas. Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is Jarline Almodore, 30 to 32 East Main Street, Eating and Drinking Establishment.
My name is Jarline Almodor, I'm the owner of 30 East Main Street in Middletown, New York.
And what do you plan on doing?
I'm going to be selling fresh squeezed juices and smoothies, also acai bowls, everything is made with fresh fruits and vegetables.
And you plan on being an eating and drinking establishment also?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. No one coming forward. Any board members have any questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Madden?
Would you mind just repeating what it is you're going to do? I couldn't hear.
Yes, it's okay. I'm going to be selling smoothies and fresh squeezed juices, also acai bowls. Everything is healthy and all done with fresh fruits and vegetables.
Any issues from the building department?
No, sir.
Any issues from fire?
None at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Go back to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address this application, please step forward. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Madden and a second by Mr. McCormick, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I'll give the board members one more chance, any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. On the resolution for Jarline Almodor, 30 to 32 East Main Street, eating and drinking establishment. On the resolution, I need a motion. Mr. McCormick, I need a second, Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Northern RX LLC, 55 North Street, Med Spa.
Hi, Tantrong, owner of Northern RX LLC.
And your intentions are, sir? What do you plan on doing?
We are planning opening a Med Spa on 55 North Street.
Could you just give us a brief description of what that would be?
So it's just services, do facials, basically, beauty, health, wellness, and healthcare.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. I'll go to the board members for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Houston?
Will every employee be licensed in the services that they are providing?
Yes.
Okay, by the state of New York?
Yes.
Okay, and will you be doing massage?
No massages.
Okay, thank you.
Just a note for the record, that is also included in our resolution about the New York State licenses.
I know, but I always feel it's important to ask. Thank you.
Okay.
Building department, any issues?
Any issues that have come up will be addressed during the permitting.
Thank you. Fire?
No, we're all good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go back to the public. Anyone wishing to address this application, please step forward. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Witt, Mr. Britto, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Go back to the board one more time, any questions, comments, or concerns? On the resolution for Northern RX LLC, 55 North Street, Med Spa, as the resolution was presented, I need a motion. Ms. Witt, Ms. Houston, second, discussion. Roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Ramiro Rodriguez, 364 North Street, eating and drinking establishment.
Hello, everybody, my name is Ramiro Rodriguez. We are looking to get approval to open up a Mexican restaurant at 364 North Street.
Okay. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to address this application, please step forward. Okay, I'll go to the board members, questions, comments, or concerns?
Building department, any issue?
No issues at the present time.
Fire department?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have to waive parking? Is this the downtown?
No, it's not DMU. They have enough parking, as the city, as you know, has limited parking in different areas. They'll have on-street parking, they have a small parking lot that's associated with their property, but just like the bakery that's right across the street, or they have similar situation, their clientele will have to find parking.
Thank you, no problem.
It looks like someone added beer and wine. Are you only serving beer and wine, or are you planning on down the line getting a liquor license?
The place is really small, so we just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For now, yeah.
Okay, back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to address this application, please step forward. None coming forward. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, Ms. Houston, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Go to the board one more time, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. On the resolution for Ramiro Rodriguez, 364 North Street, eating and drinking establishment, I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second, Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call, Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Next on the agenda, Miriam Lozano Latuma, boy, I'm going to get good at this. 92 Wickham Avenue, retail international shipping store. How you doing?
How you doing? Good evening, everybody. I'm here to help Miriam Lozano. She's trying to open a small business in 92 Wickham Avenue. It's going to be a money transfer, you know, to Ecuador, to our country, and also she's trying to sell some small products from Ecuador, you know, like cookies from Ecuador, sodas from Ecuador, stuffs like that.
Okay.
Nothing big.
Thank you. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings? Then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone present here wishing to address this application, please step forward. All right, I'll go to the board for any que-- oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kleiner?
Hi, thank you, Jerry Kleiner, Randall Heights, Middletown. That, being so close to, you know, Thrall Park and Park Circle, my only concern is with parking, if it's a shipping area, is there going to be a loading zone, or how will that be handled? That's my question.
Can you answer that, sir, please?
Yeah, we have the parking spot in the back for at least eight cars in the back, so the owner of the place told us that there's not going to be any problem.
Okay. And the way I understand it, it's not that type of shipping, small items, things of that nature, which I think that the area could be able to handle. All right, any other questions? Yes, Ms. Houston?
Just to follow up on what Alderman Kleiner said, the truck, is there a room in the back for a truck to get in and out if you did have bigger items?
Well, there's not space for a big truck. It's not going to be like sending big stuff to our country, like small stuff, you know?
So you won't have box trucks coming in to do pickup?
No, no, nothing like that.
Okay, as long as there's no box trucks, thank you.
Yeah, no, no.
This application is similar to the one we did on Lower Wickham Avenue, where they did this something to Guatemala, I believe it was, very similar, where they deal with their home country mailing things back and forth.
Any issues from the building department?
Not at this time.
Fire?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the public hearing. Anyone wish, here wishing to address this application, please step forward. None coming forward. I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Britto, second. Mr. McCormick, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I'll go to the board one more time, question, comments, or concerns?
Rick, yes.[1688.36]